Call to order the nine hundred and forty-fifth meeting of the Directors of the Mississippi Twenty-Seventh. Broke hall.
Christine Timber.
Here.
Shannon Ludden.
Here.
Katie Labasser.
Here.
Donna Pelletier.
Here.
Kenya Wazin.
Here.
Toby Jandro.
Here.
And Rory Collins.
Here.
All right, adjustments to the agenda.
I put a white copy of the agenda on your table. It's adjusted. Under Items of Business, New Business, Items for Information, New Hires, we're going to add an item two, CHS, VRMS, EdTech three, and an item three, FKS, Nike, Estudia.
Thank you. All right, a period of public participation on items in the agenda. Ten ninety. With Tammy Nedo.
The spokesman.
Do I have to stand or?
You don't have to if you don't want to.
I don't have to? Okay. Okay, sure, all right. I'm here to talk about number nine, item number nine, in our moments and teaching staff discussion. I, I understand as the board where you guys are coming from. You have your constituents in your wards. You've got to make sure the taxes are low. But also part of those constituents are the students, they're learners. And I strongly, strongly believe that eliminating a position at a lower level would be detrimental to these little ones. The interaction that they have with their teacher, I mean, the, the, this, the teacher-student interaction, if you put it, if they, if you make their classes larger, then, you know, the attention that a student needs is not always going to be attended to at the time that they need it. The focus on foundational skills will not be as strong. The teacher is going to have her hands full. This is a, this is such an important time for these young ones. You want their environment to be positive. You want them to love to come to school. And I'm not saying they don't because they do. But I just think that increasing class sizes, especially at K one, would not benefit the learners especially. And then, I mean, I don't know what year where we've never had any behavior problems. Well, then you throw them in the mix. So the teacher is kind of focused on, you know, the increased behavior. And sometimes those students need more attention, but because the class sizes are much bigger, they can't get that attention. And so they're doing things incorrectly to get that attention. So it's taking time for the teacher to address the issues, which then affects the learning of the other students. And I just feel that at the lower elementary, primarily K one, the earlier that you can address behavior issues, learning problems, helps the students develop that foundation that they need. We see it at our end. We see the skills that they come up with. And I remember, I don't know how many years ago, where it was said at the lower elementary primary, the classes need to be smaller. So that the learning, the students are there to learn and they will be able to learn.
Thank you. Thank you. I see a lot of folks here. I'm assuming, and I recognize most of you from A Wing. Tammy's the only person who's signed up. Are any, any of the other ones of you that would like to speak to this before we move on to the next thing?
No, but we welcome questions that you all have. I mean, I, just to speak, no, but if you have questions, I, I think we're all here, as we need to ask.
So has anybody looked into the social, emotional needs or the physical needs of this class that will be coming in before you decided to make like a cut here? Because that's very important. Not just class size, but we need to address those needs. And then my other question is, if we're cutting K this year, are we cutting first next year, second the year after? Because that class will probably not get that much bigger.
I'll ask that question when we come to it, okay?
Currently, the student ratio for this year's pre-K class is about fifteen to sixteen students per teacher. Am I correct in assuming every class has an EdTech?
Pre-K.
Pre-K?
Not kindergarten.
Not kindergarten?
No.
How are we managing this year with that class size?
It's hard.
Is it?
I, I have a wonderful group, but I have kids who are reading at the fifth grade level, and I have kids who don't quite have all their letter sounds yet. And I'm by myself the majority of the time.
So you're, you're saying it's, it's challenging this year?
And if this were just an academic piece, they've got this. I mean, my team can handle it. Like, this is not just academics. And we all know that the social, emotional, we cannot teach kids until they love us and can trust us. And giving kids the benefit of a small group that I can literally sit beside each of them every day and give them that love and trust, that's when the learning's going to take off. And we know that every year gets a little, takes a little longer for some of them. And I'm the first to say, I, I was in kindergarten with twenty-five kids, all of our desks faced forward and, but we are not teaching the same kids we were. And, and parents are doing the best that they can. So we have to meet them where they're at and socially, emotionally. Until we do that, the learning's not going to happen, even for the best adjusted kids.
So what we'll do is, we're going to go through the agenda, and when we come to number nine, again, in old business, we're going to open up the discussion in the board. And if it's appropriate, we'll be able to direct questions to the teachers who are here. I have no issue with that. I'm okay running a pretty goosey goosey school board meeting. But when it comes time to voting, for voting, because this is a difficult issue, we're going to be very, we're going to be very rule-based like we were last time. And we usually can be pretty soft because everybody's voting unanimously for everything, but this is one where I think it's really going to matter and understand where everybody's coming from. So it's going to be a little more rigid than normal. It's not because I'm mad, I just want to make sure we get it right. So, so we'll just move forward through the agenda, and when we come to nine, we'll, we'll take this up again, okay? Approval of minutes.
So move.
And I'll second.
Financial statements.
Hope we need to vote on.
Oh, sorry, we vote, yeah. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Unanimous. Or two of extensions.
Yeah.
Katie and.
Shannon.
March financial statement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a quick question. I don't know if it's the same reason that I look at it wrong the last time, but same period last year for general fund versus current period this year has a significant difference. Am I just like reading that wrong or?
So sometimes it's the number of pays within the month. So there are some months that have three payroll periods and some months that have two payroll periods. Usually if, if your increases are all across each cost center, that's usually what the reason is. I can look that up if you're.
Yeah, six hundred thousand? There's a six hundred thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, they can.
What type of items generally hit the general fund? Is that like payroll? Is that what that is?
Yeah, your general fund is a big budget. It's everything minus continuing to get minus nutrition. By payroll, payroll has the biggest impact on the budget numbers.
Okay, but so, okay, so it covers.
Yeah.
Everything, okay.
Yeah.
So the both marches had two face each.
She's referring, you're referring to the revenues though, not the expenditures.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. She's, she's referring to the revenues, not their expenditures.
Of the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, and revenues can be, it's the timing of when cash was received. So if there's a month that last year it may have been received in March, this year it's received in April, for example. The state of Maine sometimes does that. February is, is an example of, we usually get the state contribution at the, towards the end of the month. And February usually comes at the beginning of March, and then you get the merchant.
Cash, yeah.
So those revenues are, are, and then also the contributions from the towns would come towards the end of the month. The same thing could happen.
Oh, that's right, okay. Yep, that makes sense.
We can take a deeper look and get back to.
I mean, it's nothing, it's revenue, so I'm not too alarmed.
It's the revenues.
Yeah, the revenues are all the days and the month that they're received.
Yeah, it's just a significant jump, and I just questioned, you know, how, how that could happen and how that could affect you, I guess, in the years past.
Or recorded in the month that we invoice for tuition, transportation, those kinds of things. And February, March tends to be when we send out the invoices. We record the entire revenue, whether it's been received or, it sits in accounts receivable.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Negative motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Thank you, Shannon. All those in favor? Unanimous. You have a presentation.
We have Ms. Leslie Marquis here with some students, and they are fresh off their trip to.
So could we stand down here because that van is really heavy?
So they're going to talk about, they're going to talk about their trip and then talk about an upcoming trip.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I have to apologize to them. I told them, there's not very many people that go to a school board. So we just came back. I, I, it's always nice to share, right, some of our experiences and, and what we do. And so we just came back from our trip to Switzerland and Italy that we took over April vacation, which the board had approved two years ago. And so this is kind of a two-part, one for them to share kind of their experience, and then also just to talk about the upcoming trip in a couple of years and, and the hope to plan, just begin planning for that trip. So just a little background, we flew into Switzerland on Wednesday, oh, no, Thursday. We left, yeah. We left Wednesday here, and it was, we got there Thursday in Switzerland, spent a couple of days in Switzerland, went to the top of a mountain. I'm not going to tell you a lot about it because I know they're going to tell you about their favorite parts. And then we went down into Venice, Bologna, stayed in Tuscany for a couple of nights, which was really nice, and visited Florence. Visited Rome as well. One of the biggest moments was the Pope passed away while we were there. It was actually an incredible learning experience, I think, from that perspective. So I will ask them all to maybe share their favorite part, and what is something that you gained from this experience? You want to start?
Yeah, I can start. I, I was in summer, I was a senior in high school, thankfully, and graduating, yay. My favorite part was definitely Switzerland because the mountains were gorgeous at our hotel. Like, you would look out at dinner and you would literally see like just this giant mountain. And like the sunset behind it was so gorgeous when it went down. I also, in Italy, I really liked seeing the Sixteenth Chapel. I think that was like such a huge part. And just seeing how many people were there because they were going to be closing it, I, I think it was such an amazing trip. I would totally go again if I was definitely like younger.
So what's one thing that you gained from this trip?
Oh, take pocketing.
Could be a useful skill.
I thought I did not actually think, just like you had to be worried and like also like the restrooms, make sure you have like the other amount of money that they have because like it's half of the bathrooms like you have to pay for. And if you can, and like we learned how to like go into like a restaurant and just walk in and be like, oh, I'm, I'm looking for a friend.
Ben, you want to go next?
My name's Philly Marquis. I'm a sophomore in high school, and I think my favorite part of the trip was going to Switzerland. Because I find when I go, like, if you look on your phone and you search up Switzerland, it's such a big difference. Like, you think it's going to be great. It's even better when you get there. Like, there's no garbage anywhere. They just have a, it's a cool way to see how other countries are doing it better and how they're doing it worse. Something I learned was, yeah, the bathrooms, that kind of sets. Yeah, there was one part where they have signs all over a city, and it turns out it lead, led to one bathroom in the middle of the city, so you have to be careful of that. Yeah, so they went on a little excursion.
Hannah, you want to go next?
Uh, sure. My name's Anna DeRoz. I'm also a senior in high school. My favorite part was probably Switzerland too. It was just so beautiful. And just, you could walk like through the streets and you could just see the mountains surrounding, like the hotel and the whole town that we were staying in. In Italy, there were so many people, but honestly, it was so pretty, like all of the sights and like all of the buildings. It was so historic and just had so much history. And I think what I gained most was probably like, I'm not a very social person, so it kind of like forced me to like go out and talk to people. And, yeah.
Hi, I'm Jared Badman. I'm also a senior in high school. And I don't want to say my favorite thing was the food, but it totally was. If I had to pick like, actually, it would be Italy. The architecture is like, it's pretty cool. Though like those buildings, they just look old, and I love history. History buff, that's the best way to describe it. And like walking through the city and seeing these buildings, I'm like, I know exactly, I know about that building. It was just really cool. Like, I'm like, I just love buildings.
You love the food too.
And I love Rome. The Colosseum was awesome. That was surreal. That was one of the things I've, I've always wanted to see. As a young kid going to Italy was like my dream. It's my dream.
Also, your first airplane ride?
Oh, wow. That's a long one.
Yeah, I hated it. One thing I gained from this trip was definitely the love for traveling. I would love to travel again and see stuff. Like, I don't want to, I don't want to fly, but. But it's just, it's, it's beautiful. I'd love to travel again someday. Where? I don't know. But it would be cool, yeah.
By boat.
Any questions for that?
Great.
Does face any anti-Americanism?
No.
There was something. There was something. For me, no. We were walking and they saw like somebody look American, and somebody coughed and goes tariffs.
I, I personally, I was prepared for more than that. And we had a really good discussion with our tour director, who's originally from Germany, lives in Greece, met us in Italy. She was on our Greek, our Greece trip too, and we talked about stereotypes. And, and that was really cool, just to talk about stereotypes and different cultures and their stereotypes of what Americans are and, and our stereotypes of what they are. And she said she didn't think we were fitting the American stereotype, which was, but it was, those were some cool conversations that we had.
Yeah, also, like, I met people from Maine while we were over there, which was like from my heart, which is really weird. And I just met like a couple of like Americans from like, like Virginia, Rhode Island. I met like just, I met people.
And fresh from baseball practice. Tob, I asked them to, well, tell them who you are, and then Sher, what was your favorite experience and maybe something that you gained from your travel?
I'm Tobias Verona, and obviously I traveled with Ms. Leslie, right? And favorite thing that happened? It'd have to be honestly just traveling as a group, right? I think that was the biggest thing, you know, being able to be together, being with my friends, with teachers, getting close with other people that are new to me, right? I think that's also a big thing. But for like an event-wise, it would have to be walking through the streets of like the city in Italy. I think that was just amazing, just seeing the buildings, the architecture. It just was just, it is so much different than America, right? It, it, the buildings were just this old type of, it's just different. I don't know where to put it. What was the second?
What did, did you gain anything? What did you gain from travel?
What I had to gain from traveling is just an experience. And I think it's also an experience to travel anywhere around the world. It's just an experience. And I, I always tell people, you got to travel. Traveling the world, I think it's the best thing. It's all, traveling's so fun, it's the best. And, and it's also just moments of memories too, also. And that's also a huge thing in your life, so travel, I guess.
Any, any questions?
So where are you off to next?
So, so completely different trip. Our next trip, I'm hoping to, for approval so that we can start to move forward. We're looking at going to Costa Rica. I had taken a group from Wisdom, actually, to Costa Rica. Different in terms of not a whole lot of cities, more life science-based, more adventure-based. So in two thousand twenty-seven, so two years from now, hoping to go to Costa Rica. And this is more like, oh, well, I'll tell you some of the biggest takeaways from my Wisdom. The, the students that came with me when I was in Wisdom, one of the things that stands out after like twelve or thirteen years was, one student said, "Miss, they have such simple lives and they don't have a lot, but they're so happy." And I was like, yes. Just a very different experience from our trip to Italy, which was great culture, different culture. And this trip is going to include like ziplining, visiting a coffee plantation, kayaking, visiting some national parks, and, you know, more like adventures-based. An eight-day trip. Yeah, and, and I like to start it earlier, two years ahead of time, just because like some of these guys did the payment plan, monthly payment plan, which broke it up pretty small into smaller increments. So doing it over two years is much easier for them to kind of budget for it. And so that's why I start as early as.
That's super bold.
Yeah, thank you.
And being there while the poll passed away, like that must have been monumental. It was.
Yeah.
But to be honest, we, when we first got, received the news, we weren't sure if we were going into the Vatican or Sistine Chapel or St. Peter's Square. And then slowly it was like, oh, you'll be able to go into Vatican. And then actually Sistine Chapel, you know, isn't closed. And it was cool to hear the history, the proceedings, how they kind of moved forward. And we were super lucky to be one of the last groups to go through. Before they closed it down. And then also really lucky, our local guides, actually, St. Peter's Square was shut off completely, except for people who wanted to pay respects and for news crews. And our local guides actually went in and there were police kind of quarantineing the whole area off. And they talked to them ahead of time, and we, we were able to get into St. Peter's Square, which was like.
Amazing.
Yeah, just one of those like awe moments.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We need a motion to approve the Travel Club Trip for two thousand twenty-seven?
So moved.
Arm wrestle. I get it.
I'll suck it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? unanimous?
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of items. Um, one is a testimony that I submitted, um, on April ten. Uh, and it is LD, uh, in support of LD five-seven-seven, I gave you my, copy of my testimony. Uh, I was asked to go testify in person, but I was not able to go, so I just did submit the, the written testimony. Uh, basically, uh, LD five-seven-seven is an act to maximize federal spend, uh, federal funding and protect Maine's universal school meal program. Um, I just outlined some demographics from our area of, of, uh, the need. I highlighted the fact that, you know, rural Maine does not have access to the same type of, of, um, uh, food availability that, um, that urban Maine would have. And then, um, I, I fi, I topped off by saying that, uh, universal meals, um, really, really eliminate stigma that existed for a long time, when you had kids that were full pay and kids that were reduced lunch and some kids were free and all the kids knew who was who. Um, now, everyone eats free, uh, it's wonderful. And, um, I, I think supporting, uh, that LD was, was important to me. Um, I know that Melanie Agassi also went to Augusta and she testified in person in, in support of this as well. I just wanted you to have a copy. Um, and they keep asking me to testify, so I must be doing something.
It's very well written.
Okay.
Yes, yes, for a very good purpose, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, the second thing, I just wanted to give you an update from Maine School Boards Association. So I gave you their latest update, April fifteen. Uh, and it's just an update regarding Maine schools, so you have a copy of that if you didn't get it in your, uh, email. And then I also gave you the, uh, priority notice from the Maine DOE. Uh, just putting out some frequently asked questions that they're hearing, uh, based on the federal developments. And this is just, um, their interpretation, uh, of, of how that all plays out. So you have a copy of that as well. Uh, just wanted you to be up to date, um, and when I get something new, I will pass it on so that you have what I am seeing. Other than that, the only thing I have are your administrator reports, Mr. Doucette, Ms. Jill Kelly and Mr. Ricky Labby, and they are here if you have questions for them.
Were you, uh, Mr. Doucette, were you able to, um, with the cost for the vaping detectors, were you able to meet with Lucy and discuss all that?
Yep, as a matter of fact, uh, we have two on order right now, so we're going to start with the two. We're going to put it in the most, in the higher traffic area, where the, um, restrooms right by the gymnasium.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and one of the deterrents we were using, which was not practical, was to lock the door, uh, to those restrooms during certain times of the day and stuff. So, uh, there won't be a, a need for that anymore. Uh, so, uh, we're looking at just, uh, scheduling dates to have those installed and get some training on, on those. And, uh, so, that's where we're at with that, so, we're, we're moving forward.
Good.
Is it the kind that's going to record them?
Yes.
Going to voice my opposition to that. I, I'm just going to voice my opposition to that. I think recording our students in the bathroom is a terrible idea.
No, no, it doesn't record in the bathroom. No, no, sorry. It, what it does, no, wouldn't that be illegal?
Nothing's illegal anymore, man.
No, uh, what it does is it prompts, like, if it detects any, uh, big, um, elements, what it does is it prompts the, uh, cameras nearest the restroom to be activated to start recording.
Wasn't there one that was going to record, like, bullying words and record, and start recording of certain words that triggered a bullying?
There are some like that and I, 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 I'm not.
That's not all we got?
I don't think so, no. I think this is just vaping here, so, but.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that. I thought it was going to be recording guns.
I will learn more, we're just in the process now and, uh, so.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, how is the, uh, behavioral referral system going? How are the teachers referred?
With the Swiss?
Yeah, with the Swiss. What are they saying?
It's going fantastic. I don't want to steal my, my buddy's thunder here, since he's the one that's been, uh, implementing it and sharing it mostly with, uh, with the, with the teachers and the feedback that he's been getting. Um, I'll let him share that.
Yeah, so far, so good. Um, a lot of it's been education of teachers and what, what determines a major versus a minor. Um, and, and just really.
Is it timing? Like, does it take a lot of time to fill out? Because we've had some that, that takes a lot of time to fill out.
Um, one sheet and then, you know, one form, and we submit it. And now we're just trying to make sure that there's a clear line of communication that once something's submitted, we get back to them to tell them, you know, what happened.
Okay.
It's impressive to see the. The buy-in and how much use that it's got. I thought it might, you know, might need more prompting and stuff, but everyone's jumped on board quite quickly.
Good.
And we're already using data to, to manage student behavior already.
Good.
Any other questions for administrators?
Just a clarification. The eleven students that are dismissed, are those the same eleven that moved away?
We have eleven that were dismissed, like, no longer qualified, which is good.
Okay.
And then there's also another eleven who have moved.
So those are different students, just the same number? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you all. Next is committee reports.
For our policy committee, uh, we have second read policies. Uh, you have the, um, the, the clean version of those. Um, EBCA, Comprehensive Health and Safety Emergency Management Plan. Uh, it's the policy that says we have those plans and I link the plans into the policy, so when folks go online, they're going to be able to click on the links and get to our, uh, emergency management plans. Uh, bomb threats, EVCC, which is some updated language. Uh, IHBAC, child crime, again, some updated language. And INJDB, uh, student computer and internet use and internet safety, uh, updated language for that as well.
Going to obtain a motion to approve the second read and adopt policies, EBCA, EVCC, IHBAC and INJDB. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? They're getting longer, Ben. Four letters are okay, five, I can't. All right, we're in whole business now.
Can we skip item nine?
Yeah. Do it after executive session.
Yeah.
Um, so I did share, um, with the board members in advance, um, budget numbers specific to the impact of that, uh, of that riff. Um, just for your consideration, that's something that Toby requested, I shared in advance, so you, you see that. So that's, um, that's one piece again. Um, uh, student enrollment in current pre-K is forty-two. Uh, pre-K registration, Mr. Anderson updated me, is up to thirty-five with potentially, uh, two or three others on the horizon. So we might be looking at a, a next year pre-K class of potentially thirty-eight students. Um, so we're looking at two classes for sure, uh, right around the, the forty student mark. I, I, I given you all of the information, uh, last meeting. I, I'm not making a recommendation, I'm just providing you, um, I'm trying to do my job and just bring you, um, food for thought. If, uh, in fact, we, um, we do riff a position, it means that one of the kindergarten teachers, um, has to move to, uh, a vacant position, which happens to be grade five. If you choose not to riff, um, we'll have to fill that grade five. And potentially for a year, depending on what we do with kindergarten next year, if we have the same discussion. That's where we are.
So there was a question asked, Ben, um, that what happens, does this, I guess, not a bubble, but a trough. As this moves through the school, are we going to be permanently dealing with this class going forward?
Unless, um, there is a significant influx of students, yeah. That, that's, it's called a bubble. Um, and, and essentially, that bubble goes up through, through the grade levels until grade three. In grade three, we currently have three teachers, so the bubble would end there. Having been a teacher that's ridden the bubble before, um, you know, I was a third, fourth and fifth grade teacher in three years. Uh, so those, those type of things do happen. I, I don't know offhand who would be impacted in those bubble scenarios, I, I don't know that.
Too far.
Yeah, but it's, it's usually the least senior teachers within the, the impacted area that are the affected ones. Pray more kids move in.
Yeah. All right, so, um, I guess we'll just start with the board. Does anybody have any questions?
How, how long has Gail been teaching? How many years?
Uh, Gail had me on the spot.
Well, I'm, I'm just, what I'm trying to get at is that her salary, um, whoever takes her place will not be getting the same salary as her. There'll have to definitely be a savings, I would think.
Well, it, it's not who would be taking her place, it's the fact that we wouldn't be filling that position at all. So it would be, the, the savings would be Gail's salary benefits, because she's the retired teacher.
Whatever the, whoever the teacher's moving in is still going to have that same salary.
Yeah, but I understand, no, I understand what Rory's saying, is that the new hire will come in.
Oh, the new hire, sorry.
Yeah. They'll come in at a lower level.
Correct, unless, it, it could be somebody with, with a minor years' experience and would be a, a lesser salary. It could be somebody with the same or more.
But if it was.
Could be me, so if I, if I, I have more. But I'm not doing it.
I think Gail has around twenty-one years.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say twenty-two.
About the same, so I'm twenty-two, I think we came in around the same age.
I was just, you know, wondering if there's going to be a savings, if that couldn't help with.
What Lucy typically does, and Lucy can correct me if I'm wrong. If the position stays, she would leave Gail's salary benefits there, as to not predict if it's going to be a lesser or greater. She would leave the placeholder there, and that's how she usually operates. Because you don't know what you're going to get in a, in a replacement.
That's right, and then the following year, I would, I would reflect the, the true cost of the new teacher, if that teacher proposed.
So is that position going to, going to be opened up to other teachers in the school who might want to?
We would have to open it up, we would open it in-house and, uh, pu, publish it at the same time, in case somebody wants to transfer to that position.
Well, I, I, what, but, um, to be clear, it's a fifth grade position that's open. But the kindergarten teacher, because of the small class, would move up.
If they choose to.
If, if, if you all choose to riff, then.
Right, right.
And if they choose to do that. The teacher doesn't automatically, the teacher can decline moving to the eighth grade, if we rip the position again.
And then we just leave?
Well, then we have to hire somebody for it.
Gotcha. I, I just want to say that what, what Tammy talked about, um, and Anita was important and, and I have experience in that. I, I really feel the lower numbers and, and today, it's even different than when I was teaching and what, um, the needs of the students are. I'm, I'm opposed to the riffing, but.
And, and I'm not going to lie, there, there's a big difference between eleven kids and fifteen kids in your classroom, at that level. There's a big difference. I'm not here to say, "Oh, it's only a few more." That, that's, that's, it's an effect.
And I just want to tell you all, we're here because it matters to us. This is some, like, I, I can tell you right now, I'm the one impacted, which is fine. But this matters to everyone in this room. And when they asked me tonight, "Are you going?", and I said, "Yes", "Oh, me too, me too", because we know how important these little kids are. This is about the importance of what we can do for them. You're never going to, I'm just going to, I don't think you'll ever go back and say, "Man, we should have enlarged that kindergarten class." I can't see it happening. And if it's a huge budget, can we look to trim in other places? I, this is the wrong place to trim. I, I really feel strongly about that. And not just because it's impacting me, it's because it's impacting these kids who are not getting easier to teach.
Can I just piggyback off of what Michelle said? Um, like, right now, we are so fortunate to have, um, Title I funding. Um, we have the edtacs that work, um, phenomenally with students. But right now, we have no clue where our Title I funding is. I mean, that's federally funded, we don't know where that's going to be. So that will also impact, um, those little ones, if we pull those Title I edtacs from the jaw. So it's just, I don't know, it's in, like Michelle said, I, I just feel that a teaching position should be probably the last place to look at. And I, I don't envy your position, I do not envy that. Um, but it's just something that I feel really strong about and, I mean, I'm, I've been there forever. I'm probably going to die there. You know? Um, but it's just, whenever I heard that, it's like, it really hit hard. Um, these little kids, I mean, they're, they're coming in, you know, like, I remember going to school, we had fourteen kids in our classroom and that was the smallest class that ever went through. Everybody was twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, but we did not have the needs that kids have today. So a class of fifteen students with zero needs is not going to happen. So if you have a ten, whatever the number is, that one-on-one interaction with their teacher is so vital.
You know, and at the K level too, we have to remember that when those kids are in pre-K, the ratio is one teacher per eight students. And then all of a sudden, when they come to K, it's one teacher per fifteen students. Um, we need to keep that in mind too, because these little ones are used to having their needs met right off, because there's two people in there, in the classroom. But when they come to kindergarten and there's just one of you and fifteen of them, you know, it, it makes it harder. So if it's just one of us and ten, I mean, I think that's wonderful, because that's more of, of a, a fair, it's a, it's a, a fair way of, of reaching these kids, because in pre-K, it's one teacher per eight students. That's why you can have a class of sixteen, there's, you know, there's an edtech. Anyway.
I would also like to say, I've been the TSP at elementary school for the last three years, so I go every thirty-five minutes into every classroom there. And it, I don't, I'm going to speak on my experience for you guys, but I go in there and I help them open their snacks and get them drugs for recess. And when you're one teacher, I try to do that with fifteen kids, or they need help writing, or, um, the needs and the behaviors are totally different, like, piggybacking off what they said. Um, and I think, I think it's helpful to have the extra help, so then having less and then knowing that I'm probably, also, I'm the first one to, that's probably going to go for my job, but, um, I think it will impact them greatly.
Also, something that happens, it's not a guarantee, but every summer, we get an influx of new kids and there have been some years where we've had, like, two kids each in our classroom. So right now, it's forty-two, but that's not guaranteed, because they get forty-two. So right now, it's 42, but that's not guaranteed, because they get 42, and just keeping that in mind as well is, you know, I think important as well.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
Just speaking to, like, right now, our projected numbers are 42 for next year. In the past, I mean, what has been the percentage increase/decrease? Like, what does that ratio look like? And?
We've never seen this small.
Yeah, no, I know, but like, I'm, I'm just asking for a pattern. So like, if we projected last year that there was going to be 35 students, was it only 30 that came, or was it 45? You know what I mean? Like, what, do you know?
Is Kevin here?
He is, but.
But he doesn't know.
I also have a question, too, like, is this just a COVID impact? Because I personally have a child in pre-K right now, and had I gone pregnant with him any later, I probably would have changed my mind on wanting to have a third kid, because of, my husband was not able to be with us when we found out what we were having, and it was awful. So I think that that probably contributes to the lower numbers. And is it going to continue that way, or, you know, now we're on the upward trend? I know there's a whole lot being born right now, so.
But Katie, to get back, we, like Amy said, we always see some parents that choose not to send their kids to pre-K.
Yeah.
And then they come in kindergarten.
Oh, okay, all right, yes.
So that, that is common, that you get the three, four, five during the summer?
Yeah, yeah, and that whole, yeah, okay.
Just two notes on enrollment. I help out with pre-year registration, and I will say, kids are registration dates in March. We've had five added to the list for pre-K. And also, I also transitioned kids from CDS services to school-based, and we have three names that we're transitioning who are enrolled nowhere. So those are potential K kids.
Yeah, I did say that.
And, and speaking from the special ed perspective, I think it, having a smaller class size, you know, you're able to get that intervention at the lower levels, and maybe lowering numbers or keeping numbers low in special ed down the road, you know, long-term effects would be helpful, too.
So I'll show my hand. I, I'm all for keeping all of the teachers and picking somebody up for fifth grade. But Lucy, tell me, I, I know it's $89,000. Like, I understand that that's the dollar amount. What does that look like over the grand scheme of things? Like, if we say, if we're able to say tonight, we're going to hire, maybe we ask to post it for one year for that fifth grade position, this is what I'm understanding, right? And we leave the four teachers for kindergarten. I mean, is that doable? Are, am I going to, like, somebody's going to drag me out of my house, you know, and beat me up in Wallograss? Like, what's going to happen?
So.
Oh, you laugh, Toby, I'm serious.
Although, it gets rough in Wallograss.
It gets rough, and I couldn't go to the store for a while. You know I'm right.
Glad I moved the board, Ken.
I don't think they'd elect me.
Later in the meeting, I'll present the two versions of the budgets that you asked. One version has the cuts and no riff, and the other one has the cuts that we've added, additional cuts already identified, and the riff. So the one without the riff, so that is if we do not riff the position and fill the fifth grade. The mill rate, in fact, would be an increase to towns that range from 4.3% to 9.4%. Fort Kent's like 8.2% increase, Wallograss is 9.4, they do the triple hikes. That means a mill rate increase from last year of 0.1 increase.
Oh, I thought you were saying with a $90,000 position.
No, that's, that's an increase to the towns over last year.
Right, okay.
Of 429,000.
Yeah, that's why I come to the store last year.
We have to riff, so that means that we do, we absorb the retirement and don't fill that fifth grade position. The change to the towns is a 6.2% average change, so a range of 2.8 to 7.7, with 7.7 being Wallograss. The difference to the towns in dollar-wise is an increase of 339. So it's either 429,4, or 339, almost 340,000. That's the difference. It's not a major difference, it's just, that's just the, the numbers.
Is it 10th about?
That's, the, the, one thing to keep in mind is the first year that you don't fill a position, you still have costs in the budget for the summer pays and the month of July health insurance. So the cost this year, or the savings this year is about $90,000. Next year, that would be almost $97,000, $96 something. So each year, that cost is no longer in the budget.
And is this including, like, like, health insurance and benefits and stuff like that? Okay.
Yeah. And that's, that's the plan that that specific person had, which may have been a two-person plan, someone coming in maybe at a lower wage, but a family plan. So the, that's why I keep the value of what I know in the budget, and then the following year, I reflect, if you fill that position, I reflect that person's true cost. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I'm just going to leave now.
Any other questions?
Are we going to be revisiting this every single year?
When I spoke, when I spoke to the kindergarten team, I was very honest with them. The only reason we're having this conversation this year is because we have a retirement. It's the only reason. But next year's pre-K numbers are concerning. I know we've gained a few, but they're below 40. So if it's below 40, we're going to have this conversation again next year.
And that means a position would be eliminated with no other job opportunity for that teacher, right?
We don't know that until.
Well, unless someone else is retired, unless someone else, but that's, that's another it.
Yeah, that's why I'm advising, if we post fifth grade, we do a one-year posting, so the person knows there's potential at the end of the year to not, because they would be the least senior person.
What's the likelihood, though, you understand, that somebody's going to bite on that?
I feel confident.
Okay, wonderful, great.
You can take it.
I am qualified.
I know. I know that's here, that's in January.
That'd be great.
All right. I guess the appropriate way to do this at this point is to entertain a motion, and then we can get a second, and then we can discuss, and then we can vote, or we can amend the motion. So even though there's a motion on the table, doesn't mean it's the motion that's going to proceed. I recommend somebody making a motion, and I would suggest that it either be move to riff this position, or move not to riff this position. Let's keep it simple, so we're not doing anything too crazy. I'll make it complicated on the back end.
I have a question, though. So if we're voting on this now, and something happens with the budget because it is going to, to vote, we're voting on it now, let's say it's in favor of not riffing, but then the budget's getting refused by the town, can we reopen this?
Yeah.
We could?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I would make a motion to not riff the position and hire a one-year position?
For the day.
Okay, position.
Second by Rory. Okay, yes. Any discussion on the motion on the table? Okay. All is in favor of the motion as presented. One, two, three, four, five, six, it's unanimous.
Now you all have to stay the rest of the meeting.
I'm here for it. Yeah, we, we have to, that's our game.
And I'm talking super slow the rest of the way.
All right, new business.
Under new business, we have the school board, oh, excuse me, we have, start higher, sorry. For items for information, we have no retirements. We do have a couple of resignations. You have a resignation email from Maria Neto Flores, and she is writing to Mr. Anderson to tell him that this will be her last year in her position as an ed tech three.
I make a motion to approve the resignation of Maria Flores. My second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? unanimous?
The second one you have is an email to me and from Andrew Daigle, and Andrew informed us that he was starting new employment on April 21. This was his two weeks' notice. Andrew is, was a very good employee, and we're sad to see him leave, but cannot stop somebody from seeking other employment.
I'll just approve the resignation of Andrew Daigle.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
You have a transfer notification, and this is a transfer that I approved. So with Andrew leaving, there was a vacancy here for night custodian, and recently hired Brian Dubois, who was at Fort Kent Elementary, wanted to transfer over here to learn this building. Brian is seeing a potential future opening in the day shift and is trying to get prepared for all that. So I did approve, after speaking with Mr. Benito and Mr. Ricky Labby, that I did approve that, and Brian's actually started today. Under new hires, first new hire is for our Fort Kent Elementary School Dean of Students, and you have a letter from me. We interviewed several candidates. There was myself, Mr. Anderson, Iris Sagaya, Shannon represented the board, Becca Daigle, Kathy Daigle, and Kelly Pelletier. And I will tell you that it's not often that you see somebody leave an interview and everybody around the table goes, "Wow." And that's what we had for our interview with Mona Martin. So it is my absolute pleasure, after speaking with her, her references, who spoke highly, very highly about her, I think that we will be hiring a fantastic dean of students, and we are recommending Mona Martin for this position.
Just out of curiosity, does she currently live to the area, or is she going to be relocated?
She's in the room, if you want to ask.
I just saw that you worked that job, of course, I was wondering if you're relocating or?
I'll be coming from here.
You'll become from here, okay, wonderful. Well.
We'll give her a couple winters commuting, and we'll see how that goes.
Is it appropriate for me to make the motion where I was on the committee?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Mona Martin for the position of dean of students at Fort Kent Elementary School.
Any discussion?
I'll say, and I don't know, can I say anything about?
You can, absolutely.
I can say anything, okay. The end of the interview, you asked the candidate, right, like, "Why are we going to hire you?", basically. And Mona said, "Because I'm going to do the job." And I was like, "Sold." Thank you. Like, just, and it was incredible. So, yeah, thank you, I'm glad you're here.
Glad there's a woman, you said, and a man.
Just letting the board know before you vote. Actually, I want you to vote first. All right, all is in favor. So Mona's going to do a transition. She's actually going to start on Thursdays and Fridays. Her current employer is holding on to her Monday through Wednesday, but she's going to come work for us Thursdays and Fridays. On Thursdays, she's going to work with Iris, Iris has been in that position, and on Fridays, she's going to go solo with Mr. Anderson. So that's going to be the plan for the rest of the school year. And then she'll go finish out June at Job Corps, and then start with us officially on January, on July 1st. So that's the plan. And did you prepare a speech for us, Mona? Welcome to the team.
Welcome. Okay.
Second new hire, and this was an adjustment, you have a letter from Mr. Doucette, and Mr. Doucette is recommending John Edwards for an ed tech three position at Valley Rivers Middle School. John is not a stranger, he's sub in the district, and he was actually doing a long-term subgig at Madawaska, and that just ended right before April break. So we're very pleased that Mr. Edward, who is a certified teacher, by the way, is joining the team.
Thanks.
Make a motion to, I lost the words, to approve the hire of Edwards.
I'll second that.
All is in favor?
And hot off the press, I got a letter this morning from Ricky Labby, Benito, and Jill Kelly, who interviewed for the Fort Kent Elementary Night Custodian position, and they are recommending Robert Neto for that position. Robert also has a CDL, so the transition to a bus license will be much easier than somebody without that credential.
I make a motion?
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
And then we have, and I don't know if that's the right word, but that's what I wrote, rescindment. Last meeting, you all approved the hiring of Jackie Cometic for the special ed position after a year of long-term subbing in the task room, and after careful consideration, Jackie's heart is in the task room, and this position is here at the middle high school, and she just didn't feel in her heart that it was a good fit, so for personal reasons, she had to decline the position. So we are voting to rescind that.
I'll make a motion to that, to rescind the approval of Jackie Cometic as the, for the CHS BRS, Special Education Physician.
My second.
Is it an arm wrestle?
Again?
Take it from Shannon this time.
Well, she's working in the task room now, right?
She is currently in the task room.
And that's, that's a good place.
Rory, second. All is in favor?
Current openings, we have that special education position, which includes life skills, and we also have a life science teacher at the high school. Item C is the 2025-26 school board meeting dates. You have the proposed dates in front of you. For the most part, especially for the first half of the year, it would be the first, the first Monday of the month, first or second, and then moving at the later half of the year, it's more like the third. But it's following that four- or five-week rotation that we usually have, rotating in the fall between schools, so we can get, you know, get used to seeing both schools, and then ending the year here when we start our budget season. Meeting's still at 5:30, and this is a similar schedule to what we had this year.
Make a motion to approve the 25-26 school committee meeting dates.
My second.
So I'm going to have some discussion. Katie, you and I spoke this weekend. Katie's work schedule is on off, is one week on, one week off. So perhaps we can?
I'm looking at that right now, not to be rude, but there's only three board meetings, and they're all towards the end of, or the beginning of 2026. So April 27, June 9, June 15. And so that's all going to be pendent on my reelection anyway, those dates, so.
Yeah, we'll just adjust them as they get closer.
As needed, yep, of course. But everything else, like, all the other time, it looks, it falls perfectly. Unless it doesn't work for you.
It sucks for me on Monday nights, but I will, it's always been that way, so I'll just keep coming. I have, so I have court in Fort Kent every first, every Monday of the first full week of the month. So it's every school board meeting, I leave court, I change into my civvies, and I come here and do this, so, but it's okay. Trying to get rid of that court gig anyway, so.
You must sleep very well on Mondays.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All is in favor?
For what it's worth, Lucy and I love Mondays. We have a board meeting every Monday.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I remember you applying for that job.
Yeah, guilty. Paid Family Medical Leave Act, private option. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just give you a, a. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just give you a, a super summary, and then I'm gonna have Lucy chime in. So we have the Maine Family Paid Medical Leave that is coming on board in 2027. Because Maine doesn't have a fund for that, they're currently collecting from public employers, one percent of the payroll, so it's a payroll tax at one percent. We have approached the unions to split that share, cost share, where the employee pays half a percent, and the employer pays half a percent. While this is all going on, we started shopping around for private options, because the law does allow for you to shop for private options that have been vetted by the state. So instead of going with the state's plan, you go with a private option. So I'll have Lucy summarize what she's learned.
So the difference between going with the private option is because they don't have to pre-fund, an insurance company already has enough funds from all, everything else that we pay them. So they don't have to pre-fund from, like, right now, with the state, we would be funding it, pre-funding it from January one of this year to April thirtieth of next year, and then the plan goes into place on May of 2026. So that's more than twelve months of collecting additional funds. By going with a private plan, we can, we still, everybody still has to contribute January, February, and March of this year, but from April first on, you could forego any deductions, either employer and employee, until May first of 2026. So that's a thirteen-month savings for both the employer and the employer. The plan itself, once it kicks into gear in May of 2026, you have the exact same qualifications, you have the same wage, essentially the same. There's one thing that the private plan will not offer, and that is the ability for the employer to say, you're a key employee, therefore, we can't let you go. And we really have no positions that would fall in that, not even the superintendent's position that would fall in that category anyways. So there's no benefit to us to have that. The private plan, quote, came in at point nine eight percent instead of one percent, but the savings is not necessarily that, that point two percent, it's the, it's the thirteen months of no, not having to contribute. So the, the estimated savings from going with the private plan for this 25-26 budget year is sixty-nine thousand and sixty dollars, is what I estimate will save the employer, not even counting what's gonna save the employee. And it's already factored in the budget, so I really approve, I really hope you approve. If you have any questions. The company that we quoted, we received two quotes, one through United Insurance and one through MSMA, Maine School Management Association, who will be doing it on the, with the Guardian is the company, and the Guardian is the one that came in at point nine eight percent. United Insurance came in at one percent, same as the state. These rates are guaranteed for twenty-three months. Once you opt into a private plan, you are required to stay in for three years, unless there's a significant increase in cost that is unanticipated, that it would be different from the state, then you could petition to go back to the state plan. I sincerely doubt that the state would refuse collecting our contributions if you opt to engage here.
So is there a downside?
It's a no-brainer.
Well, same, but I just...
Right now, we don't know enough about the state plan, and we don't know enough about the insurance plan. This is the very first, the beginning of it, and the state has already vetted all of these insurance companies that will essentially provide the exact same thing they're providing. So, yeah, they can't, they can't not provide the same service as the state, so...
There are at least two bills that have been submitted to terminate this, this whole thing, specifically for schools, because schools do have, you know, a variety of leave options, EPL, and sick, and sick leave bank, and some contracts. So we, this might be moot if, if in Augusta they decide that they're going to amend the paid family medical leave for school districts. But until that time, we need to plan accordingly.
So, but if we're in the contract, would that be sufficient reason enough for us to not be, or to drop this?
I think that zero percent versus point nine eight percent would be a good case to make this, hey, the rate has changed dramatically.
Yeah, all right.
I'll make a motion to recommend that MSAD twenty-seven utilize the private insurance option of MSMA Guardian for the paid family medical leave requirement by the state of Maine. My second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Each year at this time, I ask you to consider the nominations for first-year probationary teachers, second-year probationary teachers, continuing contracts, and other professional staff. You have two letters, one from Mr. Anderson, one from Mr. Doucet. They are informing you who are, they are recommending for a second probationary year, as well as which teachers are moving to continuing contracts. And also on the list, you'll also see guidance counselors, social workers, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, school nurses, technology interventionists, and behavior interventionists. So that it covers all professional contracts.
Entertaining motion to approve superintendent's nominations for first-year probationary teachers, second-year probationary teachers, continuing contract teachers, and other professional staff.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Then you'll see a letter from me for our extension of contracts for our administrators. We're going to have two administrators that are on first-year contracts, Ms. Leslie Markey and Ms. Mona Martin. The other administrators are on two-year contracts, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Chouard, Mitch Daigle, Mr. Doucet, Jill Kelly, and, my daughter's calling me? Ricky Labby. Also, three administrators that serve Valley Unified, Lucy Tabor, Peter Karen, and Melanie Agassi.
Move to approve the superintendent's nominations for, oh, administrator contract renewal. I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Lucy, you're on now.
So you have two packets in front of you. One is now moot, because you voted not to riff, so one was with a riff, one was without. So the version that we will go with is version one. So there's a packet at the top right, in the header, it'll say a D1. So the first sheet we'll look at is the changes at third read, D1, which shows the top part has some green lines on it. Up until the very first, third green line, those are the changes that were reviewed at the last read. So when we left last time, we had a budget at sixteen million, four seventy-nine, zero twenty, and we were at a mill change of point two-two mils. Since that time, we've made an additional thirteen thousand, six seventy-five reduction in expenses, which were health insurance, actually, the health insurance costs, the projected rate, came in at twelve point eight-four percent increase. And in the budget, I had a placeholder of ten percent, so I had to actually increase the budget by forty-six thousand, almost five hundred dollars, to accommodate that increase in health. Then I, as we fill positions, I'm able to put in the, the actual costs of what that position's going to be, so that, those were a lot of those changes. We looked at the busing software, I had an amount in as a placeholder, and I had to increase it, because we're again actually gonna put a few more buses on it than anticipated. And then I was able to reduce for the private plan, for the paid family medical leave, a sixty-nine thousand reduction. So the net reduction of those is thirteen, six seventy-five. The state actually came in with a couple of adjustments to their, to their funding, so the eighty-two seventy-nine, we get an adjustment for multilingual, multilingual language learners, an increase of eight thousand, five sixty-five. That is actually funds that they've added to our current year funding, but we'll let it carry forward and apply it to next year's budget. And then the, with the adjustment to minimum wage for the Ed Techs and the hourly staff, this first year, the state will provide us funding to get everybody just to that minimum wage. So if someone's currently below, in this current year, if they're below the minimum wage that they will be at July one, the state is actually gonna give us the difference just for this one year, only to get them to that minimum wage. So I estimate that to be about twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. So the new mill change that, we reduced it by an additional point one-two, so we are now at a mill change of point zero one, point, yeah, point one, mill change from last year to go to the towns, which means an increase to the towns of eight point two percent for Fort Kent, New Canada, four point five percent, St. Francis, seven point two percent, St. John, four point three percent, and Walla Grass, nine point four percent. And the difference in percentages is because each town's valuations have changed, they don't all change at the same proportion. So that's our best estimate. And then the other sheets are just reflecting the new numbers from what we presented last year.
Lucy, point one, what is the, what is the impact on a hundred thousand dollar household?
So in a hundred thousand dollar household for Fort Kent, the total, the additional cost this year would be a hundred and six dollars, roughly. I'm looking at a three-year average valuation when I'm doing this, but from a hundred thousand dollar household, Fort Kent would be a hundred and six increase, New Canada, about fifty-five dollars, St. Francis, eighty-seven dollars, St. John, about fifty-five dollars, and Walla Grass, about a hundred and twenty-five dollars, the increase from prior year.
You can't get a house for a hundred thousand dollars in Walla Grass.
Motion to approve the 25-26 budget as presented and proceeded at the budget hearing on Monday, May nineteen, twenty twenty-five. I'll second.
Lucy, does, Lucy, does it have to be in this?
Yeah, I do have, I have that.
Next, or at the same time?
We'll do this one, and then you can, we'll just read the...
Okay.
Yeah, this'll be...
The first one, you approve the number, and this one actually calls the referendum and sets the dates for the budget hearing.
Do I have to read all of it, or just the yellow?
Just the highlighted, because I gave you a paper copy that you can read.
Okay.
So this is the, the format presented at this meeting, then that top part can...
So we gotta vote on the first one first?
We're gonna do the first one first, and I'm gonna ask if there's any comment or any discussion, so...
Who was second to that?
Christine.
So we have a motion to accept these numbers as they're presented, not a motion at the meeting, a motion at the meeting.
Yes.
Any discussion on the budget as it's before us? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Now, take it away.
I move at the vote entitled, "Vote to Call and Approve the Warrants for the Budget Meeting and the Validation Referendum, and to Authorize the Notice of Amounts Adopted Be Approved in Form Presented to This Meeting, and That a Copy of Said Vote Be Included With the Minutes of This Meeting." My second.
Rory, second. All those in favor?
So since you approved the number as presented, I do have the sheets that you can sign today, so that we do not have to have a separate meeting.
For...
Oh, but I wanted it, not a meeting.
At five AM? Perfect.
Can we sign those outside of the meeting?
You can sign them after executive session, or during the executive...
Well, that's what I mean, because I'll just call the meeting to a close. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Send me a second.
Thank you. All those in favor? We're gonna take like a five-minute break.